I wanted to congratulate everybody for being here this afternoon. I think we set the record for the most attendees at a public meeting, at least in Davis. So, you're all here. Before we get started, I wanted to find out, is there anybody here that knows American Sign Language? That might want to do Sign Language? Okay, this is what I ask. Don't know? Anybody? We also have a Zoom going on, so in addition to all of you that are crammed in here, and many of you don't even have chairs, we've got over 100 people on Zoom. This is the first meeting I've ever called where people showed up, so I'm really... Before we get started, I wanted to say thank you to a couple of people. First of all, we've got Bill Peterson doing the sound for today. He's a sound audio guy extraordinaire, and I really appreciate him doing that. I put on the handout that I called this meeting, but I didn't do it by myself. There are a lot of people that actually helped compile much of the research and the information that I'm going to be sharing with you this afternoon. And I just want to thank in particular, Lulanne McGovern, who did a great job putting things together. She's doing the assignment. Marilyn Schollopfeld, Olivia Miller, who's going to run the mic. When people in the audience want to talk, we'll get a microphone through you, so everybody can hear. And then Xena Reyes, also did a lot of research, so it's really helped put this thing together. What we're going to do is, like every meeting I try to do, because I'm an old Army guy, particularly old, but I like to have rules. So, we have a couple of rules. This meeting, when we talk, we need to be respectful. We're going to have differences of opinions here, and that's fine. Because bringing those differences together helps us come out the back end with the best part possible. So, we want to hear everybody's opinion, but we want to be respectful. Whether you agree or you don't agree with their opinion. And we're going to try and have some two-way dialogue. In the beginning, I'm going to share facts that we've compiled, so that we can all be on the same sort of level playing field with regards to information. And then I'm going to turn it over to some other community leaders to also speak to the group. And then we'll do question and answer from the audience. I suspect we'll try and keep it to two hours. When we run out of electricity, then we'll probably call the meeting, but we'll see how it goes. Okay, so why this meeting today? That's a question that's been on Facebook a number of times. And part of the inference there is, why not have it earlier? Well, we only found out about the permit 10 days ago. So, it was too difficult to try to set up this meeting last weekend. So, we're doing it today. Now, that prevents, or causes a little bit of challenge in that part of the power production for a microgrid is associated with House Bill 2014. And that was going back and forth between the House and the Senate. And it was finalized in the House yesterday. So, that bill is finished. And I'll talk about it, because we need to know what its implications are. And we need to know what all we might want to do about it if we're not liking the way the bill is right now. So, that's going on. Now, one of the gentlemen that I've been talking to is Randy Smith. And he couldn't be here today. He's interested, because he's part of the leadership down in Charleston. He also represents Tucker County as part of the senatorial district. He has a bill over here in the front row, because his eyes and ears for this meeting today. And I'll be talking to Randy also after the meeting, to share with him what all information you've shared with us. Couple of things I want to explain, and it's a disclaimer. It's a disclaimer about me. I'm going to give you a lot of information, and it may look like I know what I'm talking about. But I want you to understand that in many cases I don't. I have an engineering degree from West Point, but not the right type of engineering. So, I don't know engineering involving a power plant or a data center. I may be wrong on that. I'm a retired criminal from the Army. My expertise was blowing things up and hurting people, and probably not appropriate for this kind of ascent. All right, leave that one as TBD. I do have a doctorate in leadership, and that's one of the reasons I did want to call this meeting. On the handout, my name goes up on the top right-hand corner. If you want somebody to put on the blame line, it's me. It's my fault for having this meeting. But again, there's a lot of people that help bring the information to which. Okay, let me start talking about what things we know. And when I go into saying something that's my personal opinion, I'll let you know it's my opinion. But the things that I'm going to share with you right now are things that we perceive as facts. Okay, House Bill 2014, I'm going to talk about that first. It's a done deal. It was passed. One of the things that local leadership is most concerned about with House Bill 2014 is it takes away any authority from local government. Municipalities and counties don't have a say. And I'm just going to read. "Counties and municipalities, whether by ordinance, resolution, administrative act, otherwise, keep from engaging, adopting, implementing, or enforcing ordinances or rules that would limit any way the creation, acquisition, construction, equipping, development, expansion, and operation of any certified microgrid." So, basically, we can't do any of those things. The other thing is, we can't have any municipal or county zoning. We can't have any horticultural requirements. So, if you think they need to plant some trees, we can't say that either. "We can't do anything about noise, viewshed, lighting, development, land use, ordinances, restrictions, limitations, or approvals." The county and municipal building, permit inspection, and code enforcement is all off the table. So, right now, your local leaders are pretty upset about that provision. And we're not alone. It's not just Tucker County. The Municipal League, which is comprised of mayors throughout West Virginia, we've been opposing that provision in 2014 since it first came out. The County Commission Association has been opposing that provision in the bill ever since it came out. But right now, that's what's in the bill that passed. One of the things that we're concerned about is, that really demonstrates, unfortunately, how much Charleston values locally think they didn't want. None of us were brought to the table to consult in any way this bill or the power plant provisions. But my belief is, it's not too late. We can still work together on the power plant provisions. I think the state, Tucker County officials, and other state agencies need to come to the table together and find a solution that's palatable to all of us. So, let me talk a little bit about the money. There's a money piece that goes with this, too. The original draft that was passed with Bill 2014 said that there would be no money from property taxes associated with the microgrid facilities going to the county where it resides. So, that was something that was vehemently opposed in Charleston by municipalities and county commissions. That was changed then to say, the county where the facilities reside will get 30% of the property tax. That was then up to 40%, and then it was reduced back to 30. So, the bill that passed, it's 30%. I have on the handout that you all received at the bottom of the page with the writing, the breakdown for the money. 50% would go towards lowering state income tax. 30% would go to the county where the facility is located. 10% would go to the other counties in the state, and it would be prorated per capita. 10%, 5% would go to the Economic Enhancement Fund, whatever that is. And 5% would go to the Electoral Credit Stabilization and Security Fund. And I don't have any knowledge on that one either, so I can't elaborate. But that's where the money goes. And this is just property tax. And let me explain a little bit of why the bill was first written in such an ominous way. They wanted to do it like tax increment financing, or TIP, where you establish the property value at a certain point in time. And they were saying, the property value before 1 July of this year would be the value of the property, and only that money could go to counties. So, very, very low. Any appreciated value, so when they build something that's $1.5 billion, all of that appreciated property value would go to the state. So, that's how the initial proposal was. Now, they're saying 30% of that appreciative property tax would go to Tucker County. So, there's also revenue and income tax and those kinds of things that are factored in there, too. But for the counties, the property tax was really the most important, most concerning. So, what can we do about 2014? 2014 is passed, but we can work with our legislators to try to change it. There are other states that have passed similar legislation like 2014. And a couple of years later, that legislation was changed. So, all hope is not done. We need to talk to our representatives. We need to talk to our organizations that lobbied for us. And we need to, as individuals, contact our legislatures and say, these are our concerns. But it needs to be done in a way that's palatable. What are our concerns? Plain and simple, state concerns. And then there should be a recommendation. What should it be? If it's not going to be this, what might ought to have the solution look like? And then I think that kind of, I'm going to take questions much later. We'll come back to this. But that's kind of the way you can do some, I guess, advocating for changing laws that you can pass. I'm going to talk about the power plant now. There are some things that we don't know. For example, what's the power plant going to be connected to? It says that all the electricity that it produces will not go into the grid. The power plant is going to be slightly larger in terms of output than Mount Storm. That's a lot of power. It's 1,600-something megawatts of power per year, and that's huge. So, it's going to be connected to something. Something that's built in and around where the power plant is. Now, I think there's a big hint up there. Because the company that filed for the air quality permit is named Fundamental Data. So, I'm thinking it's going to be some kind of a data center. That's just me. Okay, right now, it's supposed to have seven turbines that are running. And it's going to produce 61,000 hours, they're going to run 61,000 hours cumulatively per year on natural gas. 61,000 on natural gas. 25,000 hours per year is going to be run off of diesel. So, even though it says in the air quality permit that it's going to be natural gas supplies that are going to run the turbines, it's also going to be diesel. And I'm jumping a little bit ahead, but I'll tell you, there's three storage tanks that are projected for storing diesel. 30 million gallons of diesel. And somebody smarter than me did the math and said, that's going to be over 3,000 tanker trucks to bring that much diesel fuel in. The other thing is, diesel fuel has a shelf life. So, what are you going to do with it? You know, hopefully, they don't put it in black water. But instead, they'll probably try to use it. So, that's their backup power fuel. And they're not really very clear about what they intend to do with it. The air quality permit says that there's going to be emissions of carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, sulfur dioxide, and VOCs, volatile organic compounds, and other particular matter, as well as hazardous air pollutants and lead. So, those are the things that we know are going to be emitted. There will be ways to mitigate some of that, but probably not all of that. So, these are chemicals that, if you look them up, they're not noted for being particularly helpful for human beings in terms of living. So, there's a little concern with that. I talked about the diesel fuel. Right now, they're in contractual agreements to buy 500 acres. The picture on the handout that has the facility, I've only heard of the production plant, and that's a small part of 500 acres. In Virginia, for example, twice as much power as what they're talking about runs 300 data centers. There are other states and other locations where they have clusters of data centers, and less than the power generated by this proposed plant supply 100 and 150 data centers. So, when I say it's probably going to be a data center, consider that being plural. So, where is it? Right now, the schematic that you have shows that it's just north of the landfill. It's between the city of Thomas and the town of Davis. If you look at the site where the Arrowhead is, that's less than two miles from houses in Davis. Because you can see the Seventh Street extension labeled on that map. Per the permit, right now, there is no record of that land being transferred to Fundamental Data. I talked to Weston Pope Thomas, and not surprisingly, they're under a nondisclosure agreement, an NDA. So, they wouldn't, couldn't talk about it with me. But we did check with the county clerk, and as of the 9th of April, so the day last week, there's been no official property transfer. Because this is still in the planning stages, I suspect what there is is there's an agreement to purchase the land if this all goes through. If this doesn't go through, then the deal is off probably to buy the land. So, that's where I think that is. So, let's talk a little bit about Fundamental Data. On the application, the responsible official for Fundamental Data is a gentleman named Casey Chapman. And I'm assuming Casey Chapman is not here? I talked to Casey for 30 or 40 minutes, two times. And first, I want you to know, I invited him to come to the meeting. He said he would think about it. I invited him to send something written, and then I would read it to you all. Though I haven't received anything. And I also asked if he wanted to call. I would hold the telephone to the microphone, and he could talk to you all that way. But he's not here. I don't have any information. So, all I can do is paraphrase the conversations that we had. But I want to first tell you that this is a, Fundamental Data is a foreign-registered company. And I don't mean foreign like Germany or England or something like that. The foreign in that it's not West Virginia. It's a Virginia company. And they have a certificate signed by the Secretary of State for their business license, which was signed in February this year. Okay, the first thing Casey Chapman told me is, he's a fourth-generation West Virginian. He grew up in the Charleston area. He likes to hunt and fish in Kanane Valley. He knows the area very well, and that's his background. He also told me that we all, and myself included, and your local leaders, that we're overreacting right now. That this is a 100-step process, and this is step one, the air quality permit. So, don't get all spun up yet, because this is early days. His words not mine. The only thing in the permit is for a power plant right now. So, we talked a little bit about the power plant. And he asked me a question. He said, what's wrong with putting it near a landfill? He figured if they thought of buying a landfill, we wouldn't care, because there's a landfill.
I guess he's never heard of Centralia.
So, we talked about the fact that the landfill is not aesthetically pleasing. And in the summer, it doesn't necessarily always smell good. But it doesn't have noise pollution. It doesn't have light pollution. It doesn't consume water that's important for the community at large here. But there are other concerns besides the fact that we've got a landfill that the people are worried about. I talked to him a little bit about what kind of jobs would this provide. And he was very noncommittal about that, other than saying, when they do the construction, they're hoping to use West Virginia labor. And I will tell you that a power plant very similar to the one we're talking about here was built south of Leesburg. It took, no, I'm sorry, it's half the size of this one. It took 800 people two and a half years to build it. So, there will be a lot of impact with construction people coming in. And most of them will probably come in from out of West Virginia, outside of West Virginia. The other thing we tried to talk about is, what kind of jobs might local people find when these are operational? And what it looks like from other data centers that are running, they operate with 15 to 25 people. So, not a lot of people, but that's kind of the numbers that at least we've gleaned from other locations. Then I had another question from him. Don't you want this in Tucker County? And, you know, part of my answer there was, yes, but I don't want it where you're planning to put it. Because I really don't. And I'll talk about that when I do my opinion piece. So, from the permit, these are some of the concerns that the group of good minds put together. First concern is jobs. How many jobs does this mean? And it's probably something that's going to expand as each data center is put online. But I will tell you that most of them do a lot of their work remotely. And they have one person that manages a room with about 20 monitors in it. And all of the safe fail systems are automatic. So, they're not labor-intensive. But the concern still is, is it going to bring jobs to Tucker County? Noise pollution. It's one of the biggest complaints that we find in northern Virginia. People are complaining about a hum that they hear 24/7, 365 days a year. Light pollution. One of the things that this area is trying to do is protect its dark skies. And these things will glow in a very large view shed in the night. Diesel fuel is a big concern, and I alluded to that earlier. 30,000 gallons has a shelf life. 30 million gallons, we will have a shelf life. There's right now projected to build three tanks. 180 feet in diameter and 66 feet tall, each of the tanks. As a mayor, myself and Jody Flanagan, we have a big concern about water. When we talk about water, and you look at these power plants and data centers, they both use an inordinate amount of water. And when I say a lot of water, I'm talking about 10 to 15 million gallons a day. That's a lot of water. So, then you have to think about, where's the water going to come from? And where's it going to go? Now, there are different technologies, to be fair, to cool the equipment. Some of it uses considerable water, and it gets recycled. Some of them use considerable water, and they discharge the water somewhere. And there's others that use air cooling, but they're much more massive, and they're not as effective. So, we don't know the implications on water. I remember vividly this past summer with the drought in Davis, our creek and the aquifer started drying up. And we had to use emergency pumps to pump water out of the black water so people in Davis would have uninterrupted water. And we did that. We did that for about six months. Thomas had issues with water. And those things can be affected by what goes on in an aquifer, or if water is discharged in some way, it can have a negative impact on the water supply. So, water is a big concern. I rattled off all the chemicals that go in the air. So, environmental concerns still reside with people that live in and around these facilities. And finally, the location. Many, many people that I've talked to that actually support this kind of a project, myself included, are saying, that's not the place to put it. That's the worst place to put it, in Tucker County. We want it in Tucker County, but why don't you put it by the Matiki Coleman? Why don't you put it closer to the Mount Storm Power Plant? Keep it in Tucker County. People will still get jobs. People will still get, the county will still get revenue from it. But you won't have it in the neighborhoods or by an elementary middle school or in an area that makes some thrives on tourist economy. Tourists don't want to come and see data centers. They can stay home and do that. So, we're trying to protect what we have, as much as we can. Still, we're going to get the questions in a little bit. Okay, well, not quite. Okay, so, on your paper, on the handout, if you're lucky enough to get one, I highlighted in yellow the fact that we have a point of contact for the air quality permit. And that's the DDP Air Quality Division. And I talked to Mr. Wilson here. So, I gave you the generic emails and phone numbers, and also his cell phone number and email. Very nice gentleman, very helpful. And what he is saying is, public comments. Public comments are important. And they're important throughout this project. Public comments right now were triggered by the advertisement that was put in the Carson's Advocate at the end of March that said, there's a company that wants to apply for an air quality permit. You can respond to that and share your concerns. They are doing right now with that permit what's called the technical review. And they have up to 90 days to do that. When that is finished, they will re-advertise and open up another public comment period. And he said, because he has a sneaking suspicion, there's a lot of people that are concerned with this permit, that they will do public meetings. So, I think you're just about committed to the fact that we'll have not only public comments, but we'll have public meetings on this subject. And we'll try and get a space big enough with chairs for everybody. So, the way I look at it, this is personal opinion, without Thompson's opinion. This is not a binary choice. It's not either or. It's not protect the environment, bring jobs and revenue to the county. I think personally, we can do both. And I really, honestly, truly believe that. I think we can have jobs. We can have economic prosperity. And we can protect the quality of life of the people who live here. But it's going to take working with the state, working with Fundamental Data. The state needs to include the local leadership to do what I think is a path forward. I think we move the microgrid location first. I think that's the most important thing. And all the things that go with moving it. They need to build an ultra-moderated plant. What Mr. Chapman shared with me was, people are concerned about what's going on in Virginia. And he said, that's old technology, that they'll use new... And he said, that's old technology, that they'll use new, new technology. When they build this, I want them to use ultra-modern technology to minimize light, minimize air pollution, minimize noise, and do something responsible to produce the water. Extend the natural gas pipeline from where it is by the landfill to out towards Matiki. I'm sure that's one of the reasons they wanted to put it by the landfill. There's a huge pipeline there for natural gas, and they wouldn't have to do much. I'm asking also that they build, let me back up for a second. For the mountain over here, we formed a public service district, called the Blackwater Public Service District, to do all sewer treatment on the mountain. Town of Davis, the city of Thomas, the state park, the Rubenstein Center, the industrial park, the landfill, everything that's on the mountain would go to this one sewage treatment plant. And the reason I say they should build it, it's about sixty million dollars to build it. One is, we shouldn't want to pay for it and get them to do it. But the reason is, in Virginia, south of Leesburg, one of the power plants for cooling water is using the discharge from the sewer treatment plant. That's their water source. Why can't we do that? That way, we don't have to put that discharge in the black water or the North Fork. It goes to cooling the power facilities, and we have a great, great way of using that discharge. So that's part of what I'd like to propose. We want to employ local labor and skills. If the people lack the skills, it's going to train. And we want to offer this to people that reside here. Or, we have kids, I'll call them kids because I'm old, that go off to college. And they get the commensurate skills needed to do a lot of these jobs. But then they go somewhere else because the jobs aren't here. Let's have the jobs here so they come back home, once they get educated and trained. And we want the local revenue dollars and the property tax money to go to Tucker County. If you go around the state to organizations that have these kinds of tips and these kinds of property agreements, that revenue allows for beautiful schools, teacher salaries, gyms, facilities that improve the quality of life of people, better roads, lots of different things. We want that revenue in Tucker County. We don't have that revenue today. The tourist economy doesn't bring that kind of money. We need something that's substantial. And we want to preserve Davis, Thomas, and Canadian Valley. That's our mountain. We've got a gift that we need to protect. And we've got to do that vigorously and vehemently, so that they don't last for, and endure for years and years to come. So, everyone wins in that kind of arrangement. The state gets their microgrid and the money. The facility owners get to build what they want and make a profit. And local leaders get to work together to bring a better environment for all of us to live in. So that's my two cents. What I'm going to do now, let's find where I wrote my note. I'm going to ask a couple other people to come up here first to talk. And then we're going to open it up to everybody else. I'm going to ask Mike Rasmussen to come up first. He's the president of the county commission.
I'm glad everybody came out. It's a concern that we all have through our account. Some versus this, some says this. The main thing I see as the county commissioner is, we have no say in any of that. We weren't notified until, like Al said. And a lot of things Al, that you said, I agree with one hundred percent. You know, as far as the not knowing this was going to take place at all. Al called me and said, hey Mike, did you hear anything about a permit being filed? And I said, we were in a meeting at that time, I saw this out, so I took this call. I stopped the meeting and I said, no Al, what are you talking about? From that point on, when the discussion started, like I said, the county commission, the city, the town of Davis, knew nothing about it. So that was the first red flag for me. The next red flag is, I called our state organization, County Commission Association. And they said, Mike, we just found out about it, it passed the house, with nothing but one to the counties. I said, what do you mean nothing but one to the counties? It's building the county that it's, you know, proposed in, and one's being proposed right now for permitting in Tucker County. They said, well, it got under our radar, it went by so quickly that we didn't know anything about it. There are so many bills down here. So that's when our county commission association started looking into it. By the time it got to the senate, okay, it passed the house, then it has to go to the senate. It went to the senate, the senate saw that, and listened to our concerns. They put forty percent goes to the counties. Okay, at that point, when they put their amendments in, then it has to go back to the house again, to see the senate's amendments, to see if they agree with it. Once it went back to the house, the house reevaluated it and said, well, maybe the counties do need something. So they put in thirty percent. Ten percent gets into a fund from five percent, it went to ten percent, that will be distributed throughout the state, no matter what county that it's, they're built in. It gets into a fund, that ten percent will go back now to a fund that's distributed by population. So you see what Tucker County will get with that distribution. You know, very little, but the big bonds, the Canals, you know, it seems like when it comes to Charleston, they have a lot of lobbies, they have a lot of people that actually fight for their needs for their big counties all the time. Smaller counties in our state, it's, it's hard, it's just hard. But the one thing that I wanted to ask Al was, I saw where your data says, how much a data center jobs, ten to fifteen to twenty, you said. What about the power plants?
They're looking at about twenty-five to thirty.
Well, I know what it takes to run the power plant, I'm retired from Dominion. And I know what it takes to run that power plant. A smaller power plant than what you're talking about, we're talking about seven circuits here. We have three at Dominion. So, I don't know how, maybe the technology's so great now that we can have twenty-five versus a couple hundred at Dominion, I don't know. But...
Remember, I said I'm the wrong guy in here.
Right. But like I said, I know, I retired from Dominion, so I know what those jobs pay. I know how many people it takes to run that. This will be natural gas versus coal, so I'm sure there's a difference there, but I don't know. As far as the cooling is concerned, you know, I know the technology at Dominion is water-cooled. And we talk about that a lot right now. So I don't know with this plant, if it'll be a combination of water, air, you know, refrigerants. I don't know what it'll actually be, nobody knows that. So everything that we're talking about now is just guesswork. But I feel in Tucker County, you know, tourism is a great thing. I'm not criticizing tourism at all. But I really feel for us to grow, and to have people stay here, and survive here, and thrive here, we have to diversify some way. We need jobs that will sustain a family. So to me, it's like, I don't want to fight everything until I know the facts. Once I know the facts, then I can take a stance one way or the other. I know that we need, I feel, I want my kids to stay here. I want my kids to be able to afford a house here. I know what the property values are right now. They're going out the top. I can control that. The market controls that. So to me, I'm not against a power plant coming here, a data center coming here. I don't like the location of it, I'll be the first to tell you. I think it's too close to Thomas and Davis. But nobody asks my opinion. Nobody asks it. And like I said, once we started getting involved, Al can tell you, we contacted, I followed, House Bill twenty fourteen, I was up till after midnight last night listening to the, to the debate on the floor on various bills. I know how strong the state is for this. I don't want to have such an adverse thing toward this that it may affect other avenues of funding coming to our county. With me, we have state funding coming in.
If you guys, please hold your hands still, it's your turn.
Well, I don't know what, anyway. Discussion is, discussion to me is, once we get to the point where it's a fight, all discussion stops. So to me, it's like, I know what good the state does here, that Blackwater Public Service District, Canadian Valley Public Service District. Things like our local things, FRN, Child Protective Services, those are all state-funded. Maybe not one hundred percent, but a big portion of it comes in to support those things. The one thing I don't want to do as the county commissioner is alienate the state. Because we have other avenues.
So you're a praise?
I'm not a praise shit.
Like I said earlier, this is not something that we're all passively letting happen. We're working now with the state to get this power plant, subsubway, possibly Davis County, addressed in a way that is palatable for Tucker County. We didn't know about this until last week. Now we're going to interject ourselves into the process, because we need to be at the table.
The question is, how are you guys going to do it?
With a telephone call?
But we don't appear any, please, or anyone, I appreciate you being here. Maybe we can work together, but no one has a plan, what is your next step?
My next step next week is to call the governor's office, to try and get a meeting with the governor and his economic development person that's spearheading these microgrids. So that we can work together to figure out how we all come to the table and solve this issue. But it's not that we're going to sit back here and do nothing. I go to Charleston a lot, and that's what it takes. It takes meeting with these people, talking with these people, and getting them to understand our perspective. It's very easy for people to sit in Charleston and say they know best, but they don't. Local situations vary, from Canals County to Tucker County to Grant County. And that's why our voices matter, and we'll try to get them to listen. I hope so too. Well, we're going to keep this issue alive on the Davis Facebook page. The handout that many of you might not have gotten because we ran out, I only made a hundred and seventy-five. But we'll put that on the Facebook page. And the questions that you raise, as we find answers, we're going to put those on the Facebook page as well, so that we can keep the information flowing as best we can. And we'll let you know about what progress we make or don't make with the state. I'm going to ask Fred Davis to come up here. He's our commission rep for the mountain.
Well, look at all them people here. I don't know what to say, I don't want to get booed or yelled at here, so. First thing is, I'm just going to tell you, Mike said something there a little bit ago. I found out by a news reporter called me when I was working for out here in Davis. A news reporter called and asked me what I thought about it. I said, I don't know what you're talking about, and that's no lie. And still didn't know nothing about it. And now I read on Facebook and what people told me about it, and it's a shame that we didn't know about it. And we heard about the tax money, that was completely crazy, you know, not wanting to give us nothing. We had to deal with it here in our neighborhood. And then it went to forty and back to thirty. But my true feeling is, if you know me, I'm a, I'm a little outspoken, sometimes I get in trouble because I, I don't purely care. But do I think that thing's coming here? No. Type of loop, it did come? No. We had a big power plant coming down this street that we got everybody excited about? No. What this is doing is dividing us. It's going to make everybody get in a fight, you, you're upstairs, you from here, no, you're not here, you're not here. It's a bunch of bullshit when you get fighting with each other about something. I'm just being straight up with it, being a human being. And I'm sitting here looking around, trying to figure out, you know, who I know here. I've been here sixty years of my life, my family grew up here. My family was all coal miners here, and they all, I lost five coal miners and died, that lived and died for coal mining in this area and stuff. Coal mines left us, and they left a bad feeling, because that paved my way. It put clothes on my back for years. Coal mining was great, it left us, but we don't have the income to come in that people really like to survive now. So my kid, he has to live away in Charleston, working all the time to make a decent wage to live here. And I tell everybody this story, and I won't say his name, a buddy of mine just retired from the state parks that did tourism, worked for the parks for years, and this shame on the state for this. He retired after forty years, and I want you guys to think about this. He made twelve hundred dollars a month on his retirement. And the state just raised our retirement, what, twelve, fourteen percent? You tell me how that means a little bit. We're here yelling about these kind of jobs, we should be bitching at them to pay our people in the state parks more money where they can live. Seriously. There are people trying to sit here and talk about, make us divided. I'm talking, I ain't a commissioner, I'm just being Fred, just talking as a human being here. We hear a lot about the water here, you're worried about the water here. That's the biggest thing, all this diesel fuel and all this water, and then you hear about the quarter inch, you know. I'm just going to tell you about quarter inch. I'll be dead and gone, everybody's room will be dead and gone before it's done. But we want to talk about going north, you go south. And you're worried about the water. This is my opinion, I worked for the city of Thomas and Davis. You hear about going north, you hear going south. So if you go north, and you're here and you're worried about water, you're worried about water, this place is going to hurt the water. You go north, you're going through City of Thomas's drinking water. So we're going to have to fight for that sometime, people. If we're going to be here and be realistic about things, you got to have two sides, you got to be one face, not two faces, man ain't. I'm just trying to straight up, if we're going to fight, let's take the fight on what you're going to fight for is correct. You go north, and most everybody in here probably wants to go north, you're going through the city of Thomas, and Douglas's watershed, Tucker County High School, and our nursing homes. And this is facts, this ain't realistic, I've been working for City of Thomas thirty-seven years. And I'm just telling you, I don't want this thing to divide us as people here. Because we're going to get up and put our pants on in the morning, and we've got to be big boys, big girls here. No, I'll fight over this, sit here and go, ruh, 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 when someone's talking. It ain't going to make a crack if somebody gets up here and says, Fred, the only way it's going, Mike was here talking, someone back there said something. That little bit of saying didn't do nothing to cause heart feelings. Now tell me I'm wrong. I'll tell you what, we all, do we want something that's going to make a lot of noise? We want to make all this pollution stuff? No, I got grandkids here, I don't want that for them either. If I foresee this thing coming, I don't know enough about to say yes or no. Do we need better paying jobs here? Yes. I don't want to destroy our rivers and stuff, I love black waterfalls. I got four acres in Douglas, by Douglas Falls, I love, I don't want to destroy Douglas Falls. But I'm telling you, right now, I'm sitting in here as people, we need to group up together and say, okay. These, well, people said, let's move it out back. Well, let's move it out back, father, just go help get some jobs here. But now I'm saying this to you, my last name was saying, get out here. And I got to leave here and go to Morton Town, because I got a little grandson that I asked to tend with it, going to the hospital. So here's what I'm telling you. Let's don't get in a fight with each other, hate each other when this is over. You know what I'm saying? And looking around here, like I said, I've been here my whole life. And, and I don't mean this the wrong way, but I'm getting ready to say, I don't know half of you people. God loves us, I still love yous, I'll, I'll take any phone calls. I was on the phone Sunday, people from Florida, people from Virginia called me, and I talk to them, I talk to anybody in here, okay? Hey, all I'm saying, let's work together and try and make things right for this whole county. Seriously, because I skied and I worked at Canadian for years, I've done everything you guys have done. We're all on the same page here, let's just do it right and not kill each other, all right? Sorry to stay so long, but God bless us.
Hey Fred.
Yes, sir.
You look younger than you are.
Now I don't.
I'm going to ask Tim to come, Tim Knox, to come up, he's our third county commissioner, let him speak also. I want him to speak also. And like Fred said, we're going to have to call everybody.
You know, it's good to see a big crowd out here being concerned about the county. And you know, that's why I run the brawls. I want to be, I want to support this county and help this county as much as I possibly can. I'm working for people. But I, you know, it's just, just like Mike, like Al said, like Fred said, I mean, we're looking for better jobs in the county for county people. And that's what I want to understand this more before I jump to any conclusion of knowing what's going to happen. Because, you know, like when we read the bill and we found out about it 10 days ago, and the county was getting nothing, that's when we go fuse because the county, that is home county, you can get something. So thank God the Senate got it up and they got it down to 30%, whatever, but at least the county will get something out of it. And I also look at jobs, better paying jobs, whether it's this or whether it's something else. We need better paying jobs in this county for our kids, grandkids to stay here. So that's, that's basically, I mean, everybody said what I was thinking, what I've been thinking, so I'm going to stand here and hold them, hold them mic forever. But I thank you all for coming out. I'll stand over here and listen to your opinions, and we'll, we'll get the, get the details as they come in out to yous, and then we can decide what needs to happen. Thank you.
We have two more individuals coming to speak. The first one is Marilyn Schonfeld.
Wasn't expecting it somewhere early, Al.
I should have given you that hint before you had a head start. Zena Rae is going to be next in the middle terminal of the public.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Marilyn Schonfeld. I'm a resident of Tucker County. I've lived here for 25 years. I vote here, I fight here, and I want to preserve our county. What I want to say to you, I'm also president of the West Virginia Highlands Conservancy, which is a side. Use your voices. That's what we have left right now is our tool is public opinion. These people do not have a plan beyond this permit. But you've got two emails on your handout. One is to respond to the permit with the DDP. And I think we're making more handouts so everybody will have them. Respond to that permit. Tell them you don't want the air polluted. Tell them you do want the air polluted, whatever you want to say. Just say something and flood them with emails. Mr. Chapman has been the one who signed the application. It's a 77-page application that was downloaded, and we all read it, and it's terrifying. The idea 30 million gallons of diesel fuel sitting less than a mile from Davis and less than a mile from the school is really terrifying. The design of their turbines was redacted in the application, so we do not know how much noise they make or what they look like. But Mr. Chapman, Chapman's email and his phone number are on the handout and on our application. Let him hear from you as a community. You all should get in touch with him. Flood his email. If he gets thousands of emails, they might reconsider. They're going to need investors for this project. We have no idea who they are or where they're coming from or when they'll be here. But if Mr. Chapman gets emails constantly from the people who live in Davis and Thomas and those who have second homes in Tucker County and all the residents in Parsons, I think we will have a voice. And that's all I want to say. Thank you all for being here.
I'm going to ask Zena Rae to come up here. She put some information together. She's going to highlight a couple of things for you, and then we'll go to public comment.
Good afternoon. My name is Zena Rae. I'm here in the capacity of private citizen and owner of the home in Old Timberland that my cousin Robert Carter retired our hopes of engineering. And myself, we bought that house in 2022, so I cannot boast of longevity in this community, but I do care about this community. So I also hold PMP certification. I am professional project manager certified by PMI Institute. And as I learned about this project, my first reaction was curiosity and cautious optimism. We all know that the advances in technology that we directly benefit from, we all like shopping convenience with Amazon and watching streaming videos, but it all comes at the cost of power consumption and build-out of data centers. In my professional capacity, I estimate risks for projects like this. If it were in my portfolio, I would want to earlier on look into what I need to build in my plan to minimize the cost, engage community, and integrate community in this decision. With that in mind, I created the document that I shared with Mayor of Davis and anybody who wants to read it. It's available on the internet. I put in there the reverse engineering in essence of what I saw in that permit and what gave me questions. One of the biggest is the water usage for this type of facility. And if anybody from Pacoantas Properties or Fundamental Data is watching this Zoom, I would like to ask you, as you design your data center, think, why would you put it in location that upfront known not to support water needs of your projected facility? I very much appreciated Al's perspective on where good location may be for such production and such industrial project. And I do believe that moving it east would be a logical choice, but I also believe that community engagement needs to start early. There are about eight points in my, by the document. I don't want to take time now. I welcome you to look at it. But again, my plea to Pacoantas Properties and Fundamental Data, you have a chance to do it right. You can make great things for Tucker County. Please do it right. Thank you for your attention.
Al, could you tell us her name?
Zena, Z-E-N-A, Rae, R-A-Y-E.
The document on the, made the Facebook page? The word is Rae. It is E-I-L-O-V-E.
So the document that Zena was referring to is in the Facebook page, I Love Canadian Valley. Before we open up for comments, I'm going to introduce you to two more people. One of them is Olivia Ruller. She's going to be taking the microphone around because she's young and she's fast. Before you speak, wait for her to give you the microphone so that everybody can hear. It's a big group in a big room. The other individual I want to introduce you to, you don't even probably know that we have this position. In Davis, we have a first lady, Mary Ann Thompson. She's going to run a timer. So you have about three minutes to talk. When the timer goes off, if you're still talking, I'm going to gently nudge and try to get you to finish your thoughts. But it's about three minutes. We have a lot of people, many of them want to talk. So we've got a timer, we've got a microphone runner, and we've got a lot of interested people out there, so this should be great. And the Zoom people can send some questions that are being written down by Loki Kearns, and he'll hand those questions to me at some point, and I'll read them out to you. We will try to answer some of your questions if they're answerable, just like in council meetings, if I don't know the answer, I'll make something up, but we'll go from there. And we'll try to get these answers on the Facebook page for Davis Town Hall so that you can see that. I'm going to go through the sign-in sheets. Chick Chase, do you want to talk?
Well, I didn't sign up for this at all, but I was coming, Freddie, I can introduce him to everybody in the room. Okay, well, I'd say that everything is starting out great. I was around when they did the landfill, and everybody came together, and we stopped that. So it seems like if everybody's on the same page, but this thing, we can do it again. Olivia, I didn't necessarily sign up to say anything, but I'm really proud of you, Al, and everybody else that works hard in doing this. It's not easy, Olivia.
Okay, Matt Hager, where are you?
See, this is the plan. I'm not going to go from front to back, back to front, the whole time. Sort of having to be organized for a well thought out this day. But two things came to mind. What concerned me when I hear the jobs emphasis is just that there's sort of an implied, we want jobs at any cost. And I think it's worth thinking through, okay, but what's your obstacle? What's your stopping point? Or what are your conditions on that? How many jobs? How much do they pay? And what risks are we willing to take on? And I think all of us have to ask those questions, right? Even if you're gung ho for this project, well, there is a limit, right? There is a limit in terms of risk, in terms of environmental degradation, in terms of pollution, in terms of the jobs not being well-paying enough, in terms of them not being, there not being enough of them. Just ask yourselves, okay, what's my limit? And does this project genuinely meet it? Because then I think we're having an honest conversation. The other thing that I've heard kind of creeping into the conversation that happens all the time here is this question of longevity and how long people have lived here. And kind of going along with what Freddie said, we're all here regardless of when we moved here. So I moved here 12 years ago. Marilyn's been here 25 years. Others of you have been here for generations. But my daughter lives a mile and a half from this proposed site, just like many of your grandkids and kids do, too. So the voices, regardless of whether we're here short-term, long-term, forever, we're all equally invested in the health of this community. So just keep that in mind, and don't let that creep into your speak from either direction. Respect the people who have lived here a long time and realize that the people who have come here have come here because they love you and love your community, and they have as much of a desire to see it right. We're all in the same place.
Now, on the sign-in sheets, I have to tell you, even though it's after the fact, handwriting counts. And I tried to read some names. So the next person is Chris Lake. Is there a Chris Lake here?
So I agree with the sentiments that you just heard. Yeah, there's some of us like myself who haven't been in Tucker County very long, but I am from West Virginia. I'm from Preston County, and I love the area, I love the people. With that said, I'm involved in tourism here. And I brought some numbers with me, how tourism works in West Virginia. Because yeah, tourism is a great thing, and yeah, we should probably diversify a little bit. But here in West Virginia, since 2019, West Virginia has seen a 23% growth of the state visitor spending, whereas the US has only seen a 9% growth, okay? So tourism, don't discount it. We are a huge piece. But that said, there are other things we can do. We should work together to figure something out. The question is what and how. And I'm glad we got the meeting called within the first week and a half. Thank you guys for that. That works out pretty good for getting this thing moving, so. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Tourism is here as a big piece of this county, and I think we can do a lot of different things, so.
We have somebody that's traveled a long distance all the way from Thomas, Joe Jumire. He must be in the back of the room, right, Joe?
Here. After retiring 10 years ago, I moved back here. I grew up on Brown Street in Thomas. I live on Brown Street now. The reasons for coming back were the cooler temperatures up here, the beauty of our county, the people, the progress that we've been seeing here. When I first became aware of this project, I became very concerned because as it stands right now, this operation would be right next to Pendleton Creek, which empties into the Blackwater Canyon and the Chief River. There has been no verbiage or rhetoric regarding what mitigation would be done to prevent water pollution. There's no information on what would be done with environmental hazards created by this As you've all heard, it's been pretty much a spin wall trying to get information about this operation. It could be a good thing, or it could be a bad thing. God only knows. This county needs money. We need a bigger tax base. People don't understand, it takes money to provide services. And one in particular is our EMS service here in the county. It takes a lot of money to operate these things. But I caution everyone to be careful what we're facing here. As has been suggested, please contact your legislatures. Please contact this company. Ask your questions. Let your voices be heard. Don't destroy our county.
As Joe said, there are some things that only God knows about this project, and we planned for that. So we have Ruth Bullwinkle and John Callaway here to help us to get from divine guidance. So if you guys got any messages, come on up. Okay, Pam Mo, you're next.
Thanks a lot. As she said, my name's Pam Mo. Some of you may know me as Pam McCoy, back when I taught at Tucker County High School. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. Some of you may know me as Pam McCoy. When I taught at Tucker County High School, I moved here 45 years ago, right out of college, and lived up on the mountain to begin with, but I'm still in Tucker County. And I'm going to jump to some of the things that I think are very important for this crowd that Al has said very eloquently, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Al. As he noted, the land deal has not been finalized, and there's an opportunity for the company to move it to a better location. And even though Western Pocahontas has a non-disclosure, if you have any contact with Western Pocahontas employees, or if you all are here, please consider allowing this facility to move to another location. We need that desperately, as you all heard. And we need to also ask the company the same thing when we've talked about talking to Mr. Chapman. We need to ask him to move the location, especially because we have such limited information from the permit being redacted. A place that would have better water access and not impacted water supplies at Thomas and Davis. But the most important thing that I think maybe we're all feeling right now is what can I do? What can I do? And I'm just curious, how many of you are online and have an email address? Can I see?
All of us.
Okay. This is, for me, the most important name and email to remember. Jerry.Williams, it's on the sheet, but not everybody got the sheet. Jerry.Williams@WV.gov. Jerry.Williams@WV.gov. He is the one that's looking at the initial application that came from this company. And that company is the one that put the notice in the paper, it wasn't DEP. So this is the very first round of our ability to get our voices out there. And this current writer, I believe, that I've spoken with and have as well, is open to hearing from you. And if we can get our voices and all of our concerns out there, we might be able to stop it sooner than later. Because once an air quality permit moves forward, there are others that will follow. But to me, if we have the first round, we need to go for it and try to stop it. So please do send an email with your concerns, whatever they are, and let him know. And his phone number's on there as well. But for me, I'm also a paralegal, and I like to document things so that they're on record, so they can't say, oh, no, we didn't hear that. And I'm just gonna leave it at that, thank you.
I caution you, if you send too many emails, they might need a data center. Nancy Lusko, you're next.
I just wanna say that in Missouri, there's a small town that fought against a data center and won. And you can look that up in the town directory. Um, in Missouri, there's a small town called Peculiar, which fought against a data center and won. So you all should read about it, it's a really good example. And another thing is, um, our road, our only local road, Route 32, is where all of those trucks and heavy equipment needed for this 500-acre thing would come. So our road, where all of the school buses go and our local traffic, would be a disaster and dangerous. I have some other things to say, but they won't cover it pretty much.
Annalise Bockwell, you put maybe? Says Annalise Bockwell, B-O-U-C-W-E-L-L. Oh, Cooper, yeah. You should have put Cooper.
My major concern, and, um, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing coming to the county, is the lack of transparency. And if there's somebody on Zoom from fundamental, if you can just give us some more information. What is this data center, though, if you need data for the transparency? Why is it? And why is it need to be so big? I'm just, I, you know, there's just so many questions about it.
Okay, thanks, Cooper. Next, we've got Stephen Lee, do you wanna say anything?
I think I put me.
Stephen Lee is also the executive director for the Development Authority for Tucker County. And he does a great job for us.
So, uh, let me start by saying, for the Development Authority's point of view, this project came out of the blue. And usually that doesn't happen with real projects. Usually projects, you start talking about months in advance. And so when this happened, and the county commission didn't know about it, and they called me and said, "Do you know about that?", that's a red flag. Usually, good companies wanna be transparent. Even if they're not at a point where they're able to be transparent, when they're ready to put something in the paper, generally, they wanna have conversations with your county commission, with your mayor, with your development authority. They wanna talk, because they know they need to be part of this community. So I wanna clarify that, we didn't know about that, okay? And it's also very important that all of you know that, that real companies that do real things generally don't shove it down their throat, okay? Good corporate leaders wanna be part of this community. The other, the other part I want you all to understand is that there are projects that are happening in this county to bring jobs here. And this could be a good project, I'm not saying it's not gonna be a good project, but you gotta be, you gotta be part of the dialogue to listen to the concerns of a community. When you put something that might impact two towns, you better know that going into advance before you have that dialogue. This is a private company, you wanna deal with a private landowner, and I want you all to remember that. This is really important. This is not something that we control as a development authority, this isn't something that your county commission can control. But each of you do have a voice, and I think you should use it. And that way, they know if this is not the right spot, or you wanna move it somewhere else, you, or as a community, need to speak your mind. And Charleston needs to listen. That's all I have to say.
Okay, is there a Brian Reed? Did I get that right?
Yeah, um.
The mic is coming.
My name is Brian Reed. My family has been here since 1896. So I'm very, very passionate about this area. When I was growing up, my dad pushed me into electrical engineering. The problem with that is there aren't no electrical engineering jobs here. So I live in another part of the state, but I'm back in this area every two to three weeks. So I drive up to the line. I'm a control systems engineer with a petrochemical company in another part of the state. We just put in a gas turbine last year, about a year and a half ago. It's 18 megawatts. These gas turbines that they're gonna use are absolutely massive. They don't create jobs, because the OEM of the turbine manufacturer basically wants you to sign a contract for them. They're specialized roles. So if you're thinking you're gonna get jobs from maintenance people, you're wrong. If we're worried about the water, chances are they're gonna use regenerative cooling towers. Why do they need water? They need water because of HVAC systems. If you think about the HVAC system in your home, that's your biggest part of your electric bill, right? So that's what the gas turbines are for. They're there to provide the energy for the cooling system. Most likely, you'll use something called a cooling tower, so the water that they use, regardless of how much it is, will be for recirculation or replenishment once evaporate. So you'll have a cooling tower, and much like the power plant is putting off water vapor all the time to make it nice and foggy for you all. Right? So consider these things. I would ask Al and the county commission, when you're talking about jobs, $12 an hour isn't a job. We can't survive. The operators that work in my facility make $43 an hour. That's a job that'll make a difference in the perfo.
Bravo.
Okay? So, so don't offer jobs that are for security people that are gonna starve to death. And I appreciate the comment that, uh, that my brother up here made about, about the man who just, who just retired from the state parks that's basically starving to death on his pension. That's a shame for state legislators to allow that to happen. That's wrong. You abuse the teachers, you abuse the people that work in the state parks. The last thing I have to say is, don't be ignorant to what these people are doing. The reason why they're being quiet is because they're dishonest. The gas permit to make the tap for the turbines was applied for this week. This week it went to TransCanada, TC Energy. They're not telling you everything. They're hiding everything they can to get away with it. We have to work together, and we have to stop it. I know that there's a lot of people here that are not from this area. I understand that. I want you to understand something. The locals that were born and raised here, the reason why we love it and we protect it so much, and the reason why many of us do struggle with out-of-towners, is because too many people from out of the area come here, they use us, and they toss us aside, and they make their money, and they go back to the crap they can't. So if you're not from this community, if you own second property here, whatever you do, if you don't do nothing else, you respect the people here, you respect the property, and don't trespass.
You guys gotta change the cop con?
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Cogson. It is a big Polish name, thank you. And for Fred and a couple of other folks, I'm one of the out-of-towners. I was born and raised a dairy farmer in Wisconsin. I first came to West Virginia in 1985. I did teach at the College of Agriculture at WDU, and I recently retired from them. I first came to Tucker County in 1985, and this was blown away by the beauty of that. I've been back many times since. Most importantly, I currently serve as chair of the West Virginia Chapter of Sierra Pop, which has a good reputation with some folks and not so much with others. I will tell you that I have reviewed a lot of air pollution permits over the last 25 years. I have never seen one as redacted as this one is. That has never happened. They are trying to set a precedent here, and it is working. In the last couple of weeks, there have also been similar applications in Logan County and in Mingle County, also heavily redacted. I'm going to tell you that what happens here in Tucker County will set precedence for the rest of the state. And if they get away with it here, we're gonna have a very hard time taking our air quality. I had about 10 points I was gonna make, I'm gonna cut it down to about four. First, a couple of years ago, a similar data center was proposed in Morgantown. Again, not getting a lot of information. But when the air pollution permit came out, the emissions from that gas-fired engine was actually higher on a per kilowatt basis than from nearby coal-fired power plants. These are not well-controlled facilities. One of the concerns I have in the air permit process is hazardous air pollutants, including HCHO. That's formaldehyde. Almost four tons a year of formaldehyde going into the air here. The health level for that is 15 milligrams. So somebody who's good at math can figure out how many persons might get cancer from that formaldehyde, but that's not a good thing. There are no controls for those hazardous air pollutants in this permit application. Also, suffice it to say that I have seen a lot of different kinds of facilities. Some of them are sleek, modern, fit in well with the local communities, or something that you're proud of. Some of them are nightmares. The fact that they will not tell us what's going on in this air permit makes me wonder what they're hiding, and it makes me think this one looks like a nightmare. It is going to be important for you to identify what you, as a community, want, and to demand that. Last comment. Casey Chapman said that we're way early in the process. No, this is the time to comment. This is the time where you have some influence. One, Western DEP issues an air pollution permit three or six months from now. They have already decided the issue, and it's very difficult to get them to change their mind. Right now is when Mr. Williams will be very responsive to what you have to say. So make those comments, thank you.
I had a hint when I was talking to the DEP. They suggested that when you make your public comments, or your comments to the DEP Air Quality Division, that one of the things that you ask for is that they eliminate the redactions. The document is highly redacted. Alissa Hannah?
I'm good. Now we'll get in trouble.
Okay. Diane Rivera?
Al, we have a question, Matt, here. Would you please define redaction?
Okay. If you write something on a piece of paper, and then you take a black magic marker and you cross out the words so they're not readable, that's redaction. So if you look at that air quality permit, there's a lot of black there, and there's also many comments that say, "We don't need to provide this information because it's a secret source." So, a lot of those comments in that air quality permit. Okay, yes, ma'am?
I really wasn't planning to stand up and speak. I kinda put my own feelings about this on the signal, so I hope the military doesn't have access to it. But I have been giving this a lot of thought, and I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to read the red flags, like many of you have already pointed out. I've lived here in and out of Tucker and Randolph County since 1981. Raised my children here. Was in the fight against the big trucks coming and dumping their pollution into our landfill many years ago in the 80s. But, um, my feelings are such. I'm not surprised to know that Western Pocahontas property sold that land to the shady and secretive fundamental data company for a hazardous power plant and questionable data center to be located directly in the path of the Go-North alternative route. Be as it may, regardless of that, I feel like this transgression is a blueprint akin to Project 2025, incubated backdoor business deals imposed upon Tucker County without any input from our officials, have come in here, leaving people in the dark. It's deceitful. It's not transparent. It's dangerous, it's hazardous. And if you care about this mountain, please, please share your voice in this. I feel like they are the occupation, and it's cast a net beyond overreach. It has flung a wider net, coveting our gem of a mountain. Boys who destroy our natural resources, our economic culture, and our ecosystems, which are so precious and so important to us. In reality, I feel like we are experiencing, experiencing an ecological violence. I feel like this is eco-terrorism. That the state gave permission to happen with lack of regulation. The state should be responsible and accountable for that as well. And so, I just ended up, I just wanna end up saying this. One time I had this brilliant idea, late at night when I woke up thinking, "Oh, it's time to create Doom!", which is similar to Doge, only ours is Doom. Dismantle the occupation in our mountains. It would be more efficient, it would be by the people and for the people, and more environmentally conscious. Thank you.
Okay, Stan Dragojich. Dragojich. He does like spam.
I just wanted to know, Al, when you get a hold of Charleston, you say you're gonna go down there? Are they gonna, are they gonna have to, when they build that, if they do, put a catchment system, a bladder around those tanks? They have to have a bladder that will hold 30, or 30 million gallons of diesel fuel. A little long on the bomb gas, actually. Out here, has to have, what do they call it, a thousand gallon tank above ground. These are gonna be 30 million. Could you imagine what that would be if it broke loose? So, that's all I have, Al. Thank you, Matt.
Okay, Larry and Mike?
Well, I wasn't born here, but I got here as fast as I could. I moved here in 1982, and I fell in love with this place. I moved here from Colorado, and, uh, I've loved it here ever since. Three things I wanna get to. One, on the jobs. One, on the jobs front, which I think is really important. And my numbers may not be exact, but this is what I understand, or at least order of magnitude. Correct me if I'm wrong. We've got about 7,000 people in the county, more or less. About half of those are retirement age. A bunch of those are kids. And then, so the working class, if you will, the people who are available to work here, probably a couple thousand, maybe 2,500. You word it out at 10% or 12% unemployment. So really, we only need a few hundred jobs to get to 100% unemployment. That's, of course, without attracting new workers, which is a good thing. But I think for the development authorities concerned, this can really help. I believe we have something on the order of 700 businesses here in Tucker County. So if we can support those businesses in a way that they can just hire one more person, wow, now we're talking 100% unemployment in Tucker County. As for this whole thing that's come up, first of all, I just want to say it is so amazing to see all these people here. You guys, you deserve a round of applause yourself just for showing up, right? Thank you. It's really inspiring to see. And thank you, Al, for your leadership. I'm an Army brat, more brat than Army. My dad was a criminal in the Army, and he talked about something, maybe you heard this, "P to the fourth: piss-poor prior planning". And I think that's written all over this project. There it is. Thank you. There's two things I find deeply disturbing about this. One is the secrecy involved. And two, at state level, their willingness to run roughshod over the self-determination and the representative government that this country was founded on. They should do a change of protocol. No local oversight, no laws that can be passed, no ordinances that can be applied. That is shameful. Then the last thing, the last point I want to make is that, listen, if this if this power plant is going to produce as much or more power as Mount Storm, it's going to burn as much or more fossil fuel as Mount Storm, which means it's going to produce as much or more pollution. And that's very real stuff. And yes, you can scrub it. The question is, will it be? And even though it is scrubbed, there are still pollutants that escape. And if you look at the location of this, it is downwind of Canadian Valley proper. Let me just finish by saying this. Canadian Valley has inversion. There's reason it's the coldest place in the country sometimes. And what those inversion layers do is they capture pollutants, go to Phoenix, Arizona, go to Los Angeles, and see that. So we're going to take something as polluting as Mount Storm and put it downwind of Canadian Valley proper? That doesn't sound like a good idea. Thank you, Al, for listening. Can I let Eric go over a little bit? Because I found that he came from a good family. Okay, Joe Holm, where are you? Okay, how about Tyler?
Hello, folks. My name is Tyler Cannon. I get to work along a lot of these fine folks at the Highlands Conservancy. I serve on their board. I also work for the group called West Virginia Citizen Action Group. Oh, that's better. I just wanted to come mention a few things. So Jim had mentioned it earlier. There he is. There are two other proposals for microgrid off-grid natural gas power generation for data centers in the state that were applied for, just like this one, before the passage of 2014 microgrid bill. We had microgrid regulations and the ability to build them before, but there was a requirement that they had at least 10% renewable energy generation. None of the three proposals that, the ones in Mingo, Logan County, and here, would be legally operable without the passage of a bill. So this was applied for weeks before it would have been legally operable. Now that we have this bill passed, it's clear that there's going to be a blitz. There's going to be a rapid pursuit of this sort of development here, anywhere that's willing to take it, anywhere that's willing to sell out the longevity of their communities for the sake of short-term gain and meaningful job prospects. So what we're doing with folks in Mingo and Logan County, I'm from Logan County, is we are helping them prepare themselves for what's to come because to be prepared is to be, what is it, forearmed? To be forewarned is to be forearmed. So I've got a whole bunch of tools here. One of them I really wanted to bring up is a Purple Air Monitor. We have a community air monitoring project throughout the state. It's a small device here. It measures volatile organic compounds as well as particulate matter. It's pretty low-tech. It doesn't break down specific chemicals, but you can make inferences as to what's going on with the air quality with those two metrics pretty safely. You know, this is a town that would be a great place to collect baseline data before any sort of development like this were to take place. And we've worked with municipalities on the Canal River in Glasgow, West Virginia. We have one of these on the courthouse there. All it takes to install these is an outlet and a Wi-Fi connection. And I have some packaged little zine things we folded up here. They have a QR code that'll take you to a map that shows everywhere we've got them in the state so far. The EPA, if you remember when Canada was on fire and you couldn't see very far across the mountains, the EPA actually accredited the Purple Air Monitors to be used as how they communicate to the public whether or not it's safe for them to be outdoors and what risks they have in doing so. So they're pretty neat machines, and you can equip yourself with them. CAG does the program. Feel free to come up and talk to me about it afterwards. If you want it on your town hall, the guy up front, not me, and we'll get it done for you if you want.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take one more person from the audience, and I'm going to read a couple of the online questions, then I'll go back to the audience. Corey Chase, where are you?
I just moved here yesterday. Just kidding. I've been here my whole life. And there's a lot to unpack here. I stayed up way too late last night looking for a permit. But there's this tug of war, right? Like, we need jobs, yes. We need economic diversity. And we don't want our kids to die of cancer, right? Like, the amount of pollution coming out of this thing is outrageous. From what I read, the application shows only two regulated pollutants coming close to the 100 ton per year limit that triggers Title V. This is an EPA regulatory levers, right? It's very close to that being more heavily regulated. The only two that are regulated are the nitrogen oxide that makes acid rain and the particulate matter, or particle pollution. Of the other 11 pollutants listed, there's none of them that are, there's no capturing mechanism. So that's a question, that's a concern. What's happening to the rest of that stuff, right? And so I punched the numbers. I was not good at math. Tom Cluse is here. He can vouch for me. Like, I wasn't good at math. But I tried. I have a smartphone. It helps. 94.43 tons of nitrogen oxide or 188,000 pounds per year, which is almost at the limit to trigger Title V. 19.3 tons of carbon monoxide, 43.8 tons of volatile organic compounds, SO2, 58 tons. But they had particulate matter. This is the big kicker. The smaller the particulate, the more harmful. There's PM, there's PM-10, there's PM-2.5. PM is 95 tons. PM-10 is 71, PM-2, PM-2.5 is 71. Those are the worst. They get down into your body. They fuck your lungs up. They hurt your heart. They affect your body. Pardon my language. And then there's the CO2. 2,516,840 tons. So I did a little more math just to give you the idea to visualize this. The control of emissions would be 926,000 pounds or 37 full-size school buses. Visualize that. 37. That's a lot. It's a lot of weight. And then when you include the CO2 emissions, you're left with billions of pounds of pollution. 4 billion, 103 million, 368,000 pounds of pollution, to be precise. Or 164,135 full-size school buses, or roughly a third of all the school buses in the entire US. So those particulate matters affect premature death in people with heart or lung disease, fatal, non-fatal heart attacks, irregular heartbeat, aggravated asthma, decreased lung function, increased respiratory symptoms. My daughter has environmentally-induced asthma. I'm worried. People with heart or lung diseases, children, older adults, minority populations, low socioeconomic status, population most likely to be affected by particle pollution exposure. And the last thing I'll say is there is an EPA form to fill out to petition this. I didn't see that information anywhere here, but it is... Shoot, sorry, too many people texting me. Start inviting Congress right now. Anyways, I'll find it and tell you, but I think it's like chapter 40, section 1. Then we'll pass the links around. But regardless, this is a hard thing to balance out. I do appreciate our elected officials being here and thank you all for being here, too. We don't all agree on this. Let's cut the bullshit. We don't. That's okay. This is America. We're supposed to argue and talk about it. That's a good debate. Let's keep it up.
The poor guy that's going to speak now is going to jump up and down back there. Either wants to speak or he wants to go to the bench.
Just a quick moment. I don't take it all the time. My name is Sean Tierney. I am not a OG West Virginian, but I did move myself and on myself to a school here, and I raised my family here, and definitely consider it heaven. And I love that you live here. I will just stick with this. I appreciate that all of our elected officials showed up today, but I really would hope that this community that's here leans back on our elected officials to figure out the best process forward and how we can help us as a community keep this conversation from happening again.
Thank you. My name is Patty Snow. I live in Leesburg, Virginia. I've been coming up here since 1986. I have a place up here. I love this community. I respect all the people here, the business owners. And I would just like to say that in my community of Loudoun County, we have about 200 data centers right now. We've got a number of 115 in planning. These have taken over the county here. If you've got one data center, you're going to have many data centers. They use a lot of the water. They use a lot of power. There's been a lot of battles lately between the locals about providing more power from Dominion. They're running out of power. They're having to run high-voltage lines and more of them across people's property. There's been a lot of concern about that. So be careful what you wish for here. The county does get a lot of revenue from these data centers, about $900 million. So there is the money side of it. But I would just say, be careful. Work with the state. Make sure you know what you're getting and protect yourself up here. Thank you.
I'm going to read you a couple of questions that came in from the Zoom presentation. The first one is, "Where will about 800 construction workers find housing?" Good question. I don't have the answer. This next one is particularly interesting. "Has fundamental data done a project like this before? And are they publicly traded?" If you Google "fundamental data", you will find nothing. Nothing. Yes, sir.
Keep preparing. Real quick, my name is Mike Swenson. I bought a house. I retired from the military. I'll take a mic. I got information on Mr. Chapman.
My name is Mike Swenson. I retired from the military in 2019. I bought a farm down in America. I love it. So, Mr. Chapman, fundamental data LLC, you are correct. He formed it just for this project and appears from public records. His main company is called Caseco LLC. And he has zero projects in his portfolio of this scale. He only does residential, like commercial. There's nothing in there on this scale. The fact that he also doesn't tell you the client, because if we were tracking people like Google and Amazon, we would know. That would be a big deal. So he is a little bit shady, as you've already explained, but his main company is not fundamental LLC. It's just for this project. Caseco is the main one if you want to look it up and see what they've done. Nothing on this scale at all of heavy industrial. And re-equipped with the data centers, the woman from Loudoun, she was correct. I just want to make two more quick points. Before we get enamored on this form of revenue, which I know we need revenue in this state, none of the communities, Silicon Valley, Loudoun, Princeton, West Virginia, none of them see the kind of revenue that they talk about. Property taxes do go up. These things, regardless of the size of the microgrid strain. And who do you think they get their money from? They get it from everybody else. They just pass it on to the consumers. So I agree that this is a way to make some money at the state and county level, but it will not be what you think it's going to do. You might not see it. They all have problems. All these places, and I have all the citations and data to back all this up from all these places. So I just wanted to... Oh, the jobs is a joke. Look at the parking lot size of this place. They don't put anybody there. Washington, after all, somehow they're cutting into this industry. They've been building data centers for 20 years. You can find all of this around this. We're not at two more cities where at the tip of the spear for this data center and get it on the ground up. That's not true. Quotes from Washington Post of these people talking about, "These jobs don't go to people around here. Apple doesn't do anything for us around here." Just like, this stuff is out there for public information. There's only 40 hours of searching with my attorney wife, and she's really good at this stuff. Thank you.
The next question is, "Is it possible the 500 acres would include a fracking station? I'm puzzled where all this natural gas is coming from." I think part of it's going to be the pipeline, but again, I don't have the answer to that one either. How will the existing streams, which are home to endangered species and heat-sensitive species, be protected from hot water outflows from the data center? And we don't know how to do that. I doubt the volume of sewage discharge water would be sufficient for cooling the way it is done in Leesburg. They would most likely need a supplemental water source. I can tell you, after being mayor for a couple of years, there is a lot of crap produced here. We'll get some water for discharge, but probably, he's right, not enough. We'll get some water for discharge, but probably, he's right, not enough. Okay, I'm gonna go back to the people that are here. You guys wanna keep going?
Yeah.
Okay.
How might we know a Randy Smith person has to say? What does Randy Smith say? He's pretty rough, and uh, that Randy sold his house.
How about I just answer that question, because I talked to Randy. Uh when I talked to him about this, he said he knew a little bit about it from the application for House Bill twenty-fourteen. But he did not know of the specific location that was planned for this facility, and he agrees with me, this is not a good location. He voted for House Bill, he voted for House Bill twenty-fourteen.
Vote him out! Vote him out!
Okay, we got it. I need to go back to turning this over to people that have signed up to speak, but your question is well-founded, and I'm gonna talk to Randy some more. Elizabeth, bow.
I'm hoping people will stay for just maybe one more minute, so we can talk about action a little bit, uh productive action if we can, for government. My name is Seth Bandy, yes, I'm newer to the community, um but I believe we are productive and positive community members. And I think that's, one of the things to sum up with a lot of what we're hearing is that there's a lot of energy towards working towards a better solution with this, is I think that it's really important that we harness that and make a plan for how we're going to address the situation, and not just dissipate without some sort of a start to a framework in how we can address it. Uh one of the biggest things, and I think, I think there are two, there are two ways that this breaks down into action. The, the first one is thinking about leading a statewide push to address the uh the problems with twenty-fourteen, right? And so that's like an undercurrent that we hear, and, and I think it's our moral imperative to say, how are we going to fix this overall? Both for our state as well as this place, and so that's one thing, that's another. Um I think that we need to form a collective and then to break down how we're going to address it. The pieces that I see, and I'm not a political activist, this is just a thing that immediately break down the bullet points into what we might be able to do. Um but I see that we need to form some kind of like a petition, we need a media presence, we, every House bill in Tucker County who is opposing this or maybe even supporting it, to have all of the facts that are appropriate to make a good decision with good information about the ramifications now and in the future. Uh for me, that breaks down into a true risk benefit ratio, so the cost, the risk, and then, you know, the revenues, and, and what's the long-term, how does that drive with the town plans that we have? When I read the Davis plan, you know, within the first page, you can see many, many points where, where this is not driving for the long-term gain for this town specifically. Um we need a legal preference, so what do we need to do in order to address um H2014 at a statewide level? How do we fix this problem? So we need a legal team, we need a media team, we need written statements, we need this to happen like yesterday, right? And so how is, everybody in this room can get a video of two hundred representatives, how are we gonna get this out to the public, and how are we gonna lead the charge across the state? Uh and, and maybe that'll be a model like the people in Missouri, how do we team up with them? I'm gonna be a conservative, I've lived there twenty years, or twenty, twenty-three years, um but maybe I know somebody who's there. Uh but how do we kind of model that? Um we need to get all of the stakeholders, all the stakeholders are just, excuse me, on board, so we need statements from our towns, our CEB, um we need um that from the schools, Monmouth, Brown, and the Development Authority, like we need somebody who is heading this up to say, "We got this statement, we got this statement, we have this in, you know, that's, that's supporting this push," but everything needs to be really well organized. Uh these here are fellow Marylanders. EMS, I, I was not an EMS gear, but I did work for the rescue work, so I've heard of ambulance, if I have that training to respond to vehicle accidents, it's not fun, right? Um and so, uh how, how is that gonna affect our EMS, and how are we gonna be better prepared if this actually does happen? What's gonna happen to our roads? But we need to be really organized and, and saying, yeah, many of us oppose this, but how are we gonna fix it? How are we gonna channel this energy to actually do this? So we need, what's that?
You can wrap it up.
Okay, uh and so I, I guess like in summary, um we need some next steps, we need, we need like a next meeting, I think, uh we need to do schematics, so I'll kind of write up what I'm thinking, and maybe uh get it to the town's Facebook page or something, but we need some next steps, we need some leaders, we need engagement, and at the very least, we need everybody in here lighting up the phones, right? Putting the pressure on, and saying, this is what's right for wrong for our county.
Thanks. Elizabeth reminded me of something that I forgot to tell you earlier. We are going to do an online petition, so all of you are able to sign up on the petition. We have to put that together and get it out there, but if you're looking for that, then we'll, we'll try to distribute that information widely so that you can find it. That was an idea that we stole from the Go North people, they did a petition, and I ended up got seven thousand or eight thousand signatures on it, so, you know, that's a, it's an effective tool, so we'll do that.
If I may, real quick, and then I'll, I'll, I'll stop, I just, to your point about finding next steps, um developing a platform through which your community can take political action together, um I wanna say my two, I'm not selling those things, those are, that, those are tools that we use to support and, and empower the political platforms that we help communities form, um by making democratic air quality data, giving them tools to see if there's contaminants in their water, air, uh or sound, sound pollution, uh and uh with the Highlands Conservancy and West Virginia Citizen Act, we're prepared to support you all in continuing to reconvene, continuing to build a platform where you can communicate across difference and pursue the, the future you want for your community.
And give other people a chance, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, Asher's trying to sneak out the door. We got the mic for him.
Al, uh in the beginning, you, you just passed a couple of questions. How, how much of the tax increment would go on to Tucker County if they not passed H2014?
Technically, all of the tax revenue from the increment would go to the county. So a hundred percent would have taken at House Bill twenty-fourteen.
Does, does House Bill, uh, does the House Bill apply just to the power plant, or does it apply to a data center that could be built as part of that development?
It's part of the whole initial run.
And, and half of that would have gone to our schools, right?
So I, I just, I just, so everybody is talking about being surprised about the news. I, I can tell you two people who were not surprised about the news, your, your delegate and your senator. Because, because they wrote the bill, and your senator is president of the uh, of the legislature. So I, you know, and it's very hard for Al, or Mike, or uh Brett to, you know, go up to them and say, you know, "What the heck were you doing?" Because they gotta work, you know, every day with these people. But these people, your representative and your state senator, work for you, they don't work for Al, they don't work for Brett. I, you know, they deserve a real question from you guys, what do you guys think? Are you representing, do you think that represents me by sending seventy percent of that revenue somewhere else? So they all deserve a phone call from you guys.
And how I was made to the audience about the fact that the revenue that's not going to the county based on House Bill twenty-fourteen, there's also revenue that's not going to our school, so uh, so that affects that to the balance.
Is Nikki Foster out there still? Nikki Foster, you're next.
Who's Nikki Foster?
Oh, not me, I'm sorry.
Forrest.
No, I'm not with it, right. No.
Um hi, everyone. So I share so many of the concerns that have been brought forth today, and I appreciate how much we talked about air pollution. Just wanted to focus on one, I'm also particularly concerned about, which is noise pollution. As everyone knows, there's very, very little that's been provided about how much noise a facility like this would actually produce, but there's a potential for twenty-four-seven noise that sounds like a jet plane that's never gonna take off. These impacts of noise cause a number of short-term and long-term health problems, including high blood pressure, cardiovascular effects, hearing impairments, mental health disorders. We've seen this happen in people that live in towns hearing loss centers such as Ranbury, Texas, and Murphy, North Carolina. People there have reported severe migraines, hearing loss, vertigo, nausea, even five-year-olds have gone to the hospital because they have severe hearing impairments. The World Health Organization recommends less than thirty decibels for community noise during the night, and less than thirty-five during the day in classrooms. Some of these data centers produce ninety decibel noise. It's causing people to leave these communities because they can't stand it, and it's impacting their health. So my concerns are, what happens when people can't live here anymore? When they leave? Where's our tax base gonna go? What happens to our property values? We love this place, if that happens, it'll send people away. We cherish all the beautiful landscapes we have here, that's why I'm here, and I just don't want to see it threatened. I know we need better jobs, I know we need more money, this is not the way.
Okay, is there a Tom? Okay, I'm back here. Behind you, Elizabeth.
Hi, my name is Tom Ashton. I came up to Tucker County in two thousand and nine, and I've done a lot of volunteer work and water drilling and stuff like that, and we can win this project. Several years ago, they were gonna build a pond across from the high school, and then run these condos down to parts to generate electricity when the electric grid was lacking and, and proper energy. We stopped it! We stopped it, we signed petitions, and we called two up, and we, we won. And this deal, as far as I'm concerned, I don't want anything, this project should not even be allowed to be in Tucker County. Total nonsense. All that fuel they wanna store next to the school, are they nuts? If, if one of those containers breaks, now all that diesel fuel is gonna go into the Blackwater River, and eventually down into the chief, and just destroy everything. And we can win, thank you very much.
Deborah McHenry, you still want to say? Microphone is coming back to the mic. Olivia, how's your fifth bid on today? She gets credit for this, though.
Just very quickly, because I think most of the top areas and issues have been addressed by others, but believe me, it is part of the plan and part of the design that we don't have answers to fundamental questions. They do not want us to, otherwise there would not be wholesale redactions, redactions upon top of redactions on the permit applications, which is just the beginning. And I just echo the things that everybody else has said about organizing, the most important thing, I think, right now, immediately, is to use your voices, as has, has been said, to get online, do your emails, do your phone calls, do them more than once. It truly does make a difference. And the lack of transparency, they know what they're doing. They absolutely know, and this is going to be very economically, in my opinion, as well as environmentally destructive to this county and to the entire state as we see these things, sham sorts of things pop up. Uh my dad and mom taught me something, well, let me go. So I think those of you who are my age and older know as well, and they appreciate, you don't buy pigs in a pokey.
I think as far as the, the lack of transparency, the state is gonna have a rude awakening by the fact that all of you showed up today. It's just really amazing. I'm gonna turn it over to Eric Thompson, you're back.
Thank you. As we, you know, everybody speaks about how long they've been around here, I went to kindergarten in the kindergarten that's directly next to that facility. So I have a lot in district here in county. Just the state job is beyond all the other concerns that were, have been raised, is uh the site location is just nonsensical. I mean, the fact of the matter is, is water, and if you're looking for industrialized land, ten miles that direction, nine minutes' drive from here, is a location that already has a man-made urban link. It also has, it might have little lands that are basically ash dumps, you know, if they were looking at building this or, you know, using the site location, it would be obviously ten minutes outside of town, beyond all reservations, that's it.
I'm Judy Brown, I'm a friend of Blackwater, and we're very excited about getting all of the Blackwater Canyon into public ownership, and we're working on opening up the trail to everybody and opening up the Canadian Loop Road, which has basically been closed for years, so people can come from above and down into that side of the canyon. The kayakers are excited that they can take out at points on the downhill left and all that kind of stuff. I wanted to mention it as a process thing, that I think the lawyer for the Tucker County Commission could sue over the redactions. This is a legal issue, they're claiming this is confidential business information. CBI is the term, was brought up to me by the guy who's reviewing the permit. This can be illegal if you can prove it's not confidential. And some, a lawyer for the state could go after it, a lawyer for nonprofits could go after it, but we need to know what's in that permit application, and this is just the first one, and this is the one to start with. So I think that's an action that could be taken, and Debbie might go a lawyer, who'd be taken. I'm sure there are other lawyers in the room. Anyway, legal action is always good, in my opinion.
So, my background, um I went to school at Rossburg for computer engineering, did that for a number of years, and then I became architectural designer. So unfortunate for you, Mr. Chapman, to understand how these things work. For your data centers, they're not decreasing in power, they're only increasing. The last generation of CPUs, GPUs, power supplies, and motherboards have gone up between fifteen and seventeen percent depending on manufacturing. Power requirements have gone up over twenty percent, which means the plans that they have, they plan on expanding if they're planning on keeping a permanent data center. What it would look like? I couldn't tell you. As far as jobs, they're gonna be temporary jobs that come in from out of state because they're gonna use their heavy industry contractors to do the work, and then they're gonna go home. What you're gonna be left with are security and people who are gonna sit there and mob folks.
Snow removal.
Snow removal, thank you. I have no here, I've been here for two years, my wife's from the area, so, you know, affordable area with the mountains. Secondly, these data centers, as has been talked about already, use a massive amount of water, and it doesn't matter if it's a closed-loop system or an open-loop system, because the, and I wanna bring this up, because if they come in and say, "Oh, it's a closed-loop system," therefore it uses less water. Those closed-loop systems, just like anyone who has ever built a custom PC and uses a water-based cooling loop, knows that you have to flush that. water-based cooling loop, knows that you have to flush that. We haven't heard how they would flush them. And as far as the air systems, those are, those are, oh, the power requirements and cooling requirements for new data, for new stacks, is what we call, are not sufficient enough to cool these things, because they're supposed to sit around between seventy-four and eighty degrees centigrade to be as fast as they need to be. Also, we haven't heard anything in terms of how we're gonna get the infrastructure into the area in order to deal with not megabytes or gigabytes, we're talking about petabytes of information that has to come in and out of the data center. And do we get access to that? Because I'm pretty sure everyone's aware, our internet infrastructure here, not the best. In terms of the planning, we've seen one plan, the turbines are heavily redacted. I guarantee you, they have all the permits sent in a lawyer's office stacked up, ready to go, because that's how these things work. That's where my, where is our potential designer? We have all our permits ready to go, because we know sometimes a county can really hold a project. So they build them all up and then just shuffle them in as fast as they can.
Hi, I'm Hannah Tierney. I am not a lifer here, but I've been here for several years to feed my family. I have two children that go to school in Thomas and we're heavily rooted here now as a family. Extremely concerned based on our experience of last summer in Thomas with the water supply issue. That was my first red flag to this experience where I thought, I gotta dig in deep and really get connected quickly here. So I'm grateful to see everybody here today. My thought beyond that, and now that this information session has provided a lot of great information for all of us, was the best connection here, which is what are the actionable steps going forward and how can we very quickly create these actionable steps? I think time is of the essence right now, and so looking to our local government that is currently being disrespectfully denied a voice in our state. I would like to know how we can support our local government and how a voice is heard on a louder platform in Charleston. And actually be heard, because I've made a lot of calls and I haven't heard a lot of things back and I've done a lot of emails and I haven't heard a lot of things back either.
I think meetings like this make a big difference. I think, you know, all the people that were here were just needing started is significant. I haven't seen that at Tucker County yet. I've been here twelve years, thirteen years, which isn't a long time, I'm not a lifer, but I've not seen this kind of public turnout for an issue that threatens all of us in some way or another. So I appreciate that and we'll work on the government part of it. The petition will be another one and as people have said, your public comments and your telephone calls, they do add up. You may not get an answer, but they add up. Okay, Glenda Marshall, are you still here?
I'm not that person, but I would like to.
Okay, we'll do you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Robinson. So I'm in a, I'm in a little bit different demographic than everybody else. I'm a Maryland resident, I'm a vital Maryland resident. I'm one of the few people, you have commuting in an hour away from Garrett County to come and work here. So I'm on ski patrol at Canadian Valley and at Weyrath and I'm a raft guide at Blackwater Outdoor Adventures. I'm on search and rescue with a group in Morgantown and I'm a freelance graphic designer, so I'm working here too. I found a home here that I didn't expect and I want to keep working here. But I'm immersed in the environment and the ecosystem and if there's chemicals that cause cancer where I'm swimming in the rivers all the time, I'm gonna have to go somewhere else. You need people like me coming here and what you need to do is invest money in environmental jobs, in tourism jobs, in the state and park, in the state parks, not, not in things like this where it's gonna wreck the ecosystem and drive us away, because that's what you have going for you here.
I'm not on the list, so I'll wait until all the people on the list.
Thanks. I'm Abby McHolly. I've been around here for several decades. I'm not sure if I'd have been here even sooner, but one of the things I love about this area is it's the best place to raise your children. And so I believe I will raise my children here when we grow up, like, how much did Mexico, but I wanna keep this a place that's safe for everybody's children to grow up. And I'm very concerned about the oil pollution and something that hasn't really been talked about very much is, what about this thirty millions of gallons of fuel and the natural gas that they're also gonna be using? Have you all ever looked online at what explosions and fires look like? I searched for explosions that big and there's none that I could find. I found one much, much smaller that took out eight miles by one mile radius. And I'm talking about put it by our school. That would take out Davis and Thomas. Like I mentioned, like what it falls. So I just wanted to put that out there. Also, Al, I encourage you, I really appreciate that you're gonna work hard at this and talk to people. And a suggestion that I have is maybe not say that we do want it in Tucker County just as a different location, maybe say that we need more information before we decide if we want it in Tucker County at all. I don't have much, I don't have much to let you say just think one person's life is worth, but fifteen jobs and a little bit of tax revenue, they let us squeak out of it? It's not worth it to kill us, to kill our neighbors, to kill our community, not much of the environment and the future. And Brady Smith, we should come here and talk to us face-to-face. Can you have me? Do you have the reason you have your job? And let's do it. It's time for you to do it. Come represent us, the people. Thank you.
My name's Debbie Cattfield. I have not lived here my whole life, but my ancestors have, going back in Tucker County and Preston County. My parents had a business until they aged out and retired and then cast away. I live here now, as does my daughter and her children, and am a homeowner here. My history, I'm learning so much about the environmental impact. I certainly have had questions and concerns and you all have brought up so many things that I know nothing about. My education is in social work, working with children and families for forty-five plus years. So my concerns are around the effect on the children and the families and the human effects and having this proposed business be so close to the school in terms of the dangers to the residents and the community. One thing that I wanted to say, just to tap on, when we're thinking about actionable steps, I think one of the things we've heard is that, well gee, they did this and they didn't ask us for our input. And I think a tier that we have to add to this planning is communication at the national level, because the president, whether, however you feel about that, he either promised this or he threatened it, but he's been talking for a while about executive orders on a national level related to these power plants and the AI data centers that would go with them. And he's talking about it on a national level. He's talking about removing things that would slow the process down. So when we're talking about the environment, environment protection, noise, pollution, all of these issues, he's already said nationally, I'm gonna sign an executive order and I'm gonna fast-track all of this to make it happen. So the things that historically would take weeks and months to do assessments and studies and look at the dangers and the results associated with this, he's already said, I'm gonna do away with all that. I'm gonna make this happen quickly. Like, he talks about this being a big, beautiful thing and was part of his inauguration, saw on the stage with him all the billionaires who are involved in the use of these, this data and who really want to have this all across the country. And so we can't wait for them to ask us for our opinion, because they're not gonna ask us for our opinion. And so a part of this communication has to be on the national level. The reason why that this moved through so quickly is that Governor Morrissey passed that communication and he made it clear to both the Senate and the House that he wanted this passed this session. He made it clear to all of them and they got in line and complied and as of yesterday, it all passed. So it's happening just the way they want it to happen and so I just really hope that as we're talking about this, that we're just not looking at it incrementally in little pieces, that we're taking a step back and looking at the big picture, because this is a national issue and not just, yeah, we're probably not gonna get our senators.
I need to sort of.
Okay. We're probably not gonna get our senators here in West Virginia to help us and to support us in this action, but there are legislators from across the nation who are gonna have to deal with this in their own states and they will join with us if we communicate our concerns.
Thanks. My name's Dan Maro, I've been here a bit over a decade. My wife and I are raising our one and old daughter and we're all of a sudden here. For now, I'm thrilled you came doing that. I want to just add a couple of points that I wanna say to these people who said before, but one, I think the idea that this is gonna add to our tax base is an illusion. If you imagine Mount Storm Power Plant right over there between Davis and Thomas with smoke stacks moving over our towns and then you manage Canadian Valley full of smog every morning when there's an inversion of the ballot, that's seventy percent of mortgages. What that means, the property values for all of your homes go down at least fifty percent. It means tourists stop coming here, it means people stop moving here, because this is not gonna be a nice coast to live. And so that means whatever amount of tax revenue that we might get, what'll end up, it'll give us the thirty percent, it's not gonna be enough to compensate for the decline of everybody's property values in this whole pack of the county, probably the whole county. So that's point one. Point two, I also wanna say, I really appreciate all the information you brought to me in, that was very helpful, thank you. Point two, I don't think these people want more information. So I understand the idea of saying, hey, let's move it seven miles further out of quarter age. Maybe I could support that, I don't know, I'd want more information, but they don't want it yet. They're not here. They're not giving you, there's no one to negotiate with, they're just trying to rent it for you. So you can't come to somebody that's trying to steamroll you and say, hey, I'd like to negotiate. You need to say no until they give you more information and treat you for the fact that you're. But again, I think that's a really good idea to stay organized, people need to do that. I'm here to help somewhat. It might freeze out reasons to a bit. But the thing to remember is that the companies that are using these data centers that are benefiting from them are very large, high-visibility publicly traded companies that all have sustainability and community well-being obligations that they've made. This is Meta, this is Google, this is OpenAI. These companies are very sensitive to subject pressure, to public pressure, okay? So we have figured out which companies will be benefiting from it and we need to go to those companies themselves, because the last thing they want is a documentary about how they were ramming through pollution in a second-tier state and country.
Hi, I'm Andy Dalton, I have two comments. Number one, no one's mentioned light pollution and I wanna put that out there because we do value our earth skies here. Number two, excuse me for being very cynical, but I'm very cynical. The reason they're putting it, saying they're gonna put it by an elementary school is so that they can say that they gave in when they moved it seven miles down the road. We need to decide if we really want this thing or not.
Are there any other people that have any burning desire to say something that hasn't been said? Okay. You and this lady and then that lady and then we do it.
Hi, my name is Steffi McClure and not that it really matters, but I'm a Tucker County girl. I have family history here, two years, four years, not in Tucker, but in Ranford County. And I have a question, Randy Smith, why are we taking this bill? Are there any other bills that have gone through West Virginia legislature that takes away the rights, the ordinances, the zoning, the oversight? What bills are they? I'm curious. Did somebody say yes?
They're trying to push a bill that basically was formed from.
Oh my god.
Remove what?
West Virginia. They're trying to remove FOIA, so when you do a free of information.
They did.
Right, so this is like a new era of like, the legislature like ramming down local communities with their agenda, regardless of what communities have to say. And I think that's a real issue, you know, as constitutionalists, as a federalist, like, you know, these are our communities, we live here, we raise our kids here, and that's a problem. We should have a say in what goes in our communities, what jobs we get, what our infrastructure is, what are our partners for water, sewage, power, electric, you know, all those things have an impact on us as citizens. So that's what I would say. I think Randy Smith should come.
Hi, my name's Corinne Rogers, if you don't know me, I've only been here for a little over a year, but I can tell you that I'm here in Athens, Georgia. I hope that means something. I just wanted to put forth a couple points and questions that in looking into this, I have. So when you look at the company, the shell company fundamental data, they were created about nine months ago in West Virginia. That leads me to believe that maybe something like this has been in the works or been looked at for about nine months. So the question is, why is it that you didn't hear anything about it or give this application until a week before HB twenty-fourteen was passed? That feels a little strategic. Another thing is that these data centers, we've already talked about their water usage, the ways that they use that to cool, where that's gonna go, a lot of people already made that claim. My question is that there's, would they, they almost always have some kind of water treatment plant with that, that are also associated with emissions? Is that included in that application or is this gonna be additional that we'll find out later down the line that there's more emissions than we already know about? Or don't, because I think it's redacted. They also usually don't track their water usage because it's not profitable to do so. So will there be a water balance study conducted to evaluate that potential water demand at this site or where the construction? And the other thing to point out is that these data centers in other places that they've been after the fact, you know, we talked about, you know, the benefits that we might get from property taxes, but these corporations. get from property taxes, but these corporations in places like, I think I know what's happening in Virginia, they're suing to get those property taxes lowered because they don't want to pay as much. Is that something that's going to happen here once they're built? Definitely.
I was just going to answer, back to what you just said, direct under the permit, probably three times page, page, seven hundred pages. What's not in that permit is more than within it. There's so little information in there, it's unbelievable. And water, cooling, wastewater, all of those things, nothing.
Yeah, where's that information?
And the other thing that's not in there, they really have a nitrogen oxide reduction system that requires a large quantity of methane and hydroxyl ammonia. There is no take road conditions anywhere in that permit. They say they're going to use it, but it's not in there. So again, all this secrecy and all this reaction is just great.
I want to involve you to the state of the better end, and I want to just leave you with this part of the thought. I'm not as mild mannered a pushover as you might think, and I really plan to fight this for all of us, because this is important. This makes a difference to not only our quality of life today, but also tomorrow. And that's important. Once it's lost, it can't be regained, and we need to protect what we have when we can. So again, thank you all very much for coming and being part of this.